Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight, we're going to have several committee meetings. You might notice that part of our crew of dedicated council members are up here right now. What we do is have the committee members that serve on that particular committee up here at the time we do the discussion. Council members who are in the audience can still ask questions if they arise, as can the audience. So we'll start out with the Planning and Development Committee. We have four agenda items, and this committee is chaired by Councilmember Fall and has councilmembers Reisner, McGee, and Grace.
Thank you. First, we're going to talk about the Hope Drive Enhanced Access Easement. Hope Drive, as many people know, it's kind of on the far end of East State Street towards Holzer, nestled up against the hills there. The HAPCAP, which is one of our partners that we do a lot of different social planning and programs with, is interested in developing a preschool, a Head Start Early Child Education Center, in this general area. And they can't really go forward with applying for different types of funding until the city goes forward with this enhanced easement, the Enhanced Access Easement, which is basically what it is. It's an enhanced access for, because you're going to have an increase in especially vulnerable little kids there in that area. So that's the background of it. So that will come forward from the mayor's office. And is there anybody here to speak? Right, Kelly. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Nellamater, and I'm the Director of the Head Start and Early Head Start Programs for HAPCAP. A little background, we currently lease space on Richland Avenue. It is not big enough for our future plans. We would like to increase our services and provide full-day Head Start services for children at the Athens Center. We have it at a couple other centers we have, but there's no space at the current location. We have looked for like five years for land, been unsuccessful, came across this little piece of property. The land is actually, there's an easement for ingress and egress, but there is no clear easement across land that is currently a part of the Ohio Public Works Commission land. There's no easement for utilities. So before we can even move forward to determine if the land is actually suitable for building, we need to get utilities in place. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
Right. I want to say yay, because childcare in this community is difficult, especially full-day childcare. And this is definitely a need that we need to fill, and we've been told over and over as a councilperson. Mayor, would you like to add anything?
All just, the only thing I need to add or would like to add is that Doug Stanley, when Doug was the Director for HAPCAP, which is Hawking Athens Perry Community Action, that we engaged, you and I engaged, this seems like a long time ago. And this is, this does fit well in that location, but again, it is getting an enhanced easement to where utilities can go through. And I too am excited about seeing HAPCAP, or seeing Head Start, finding something that appears to be suitable. I think there's still a number of hurdles ahead of you as you're doing the planning. I read the email, everything from soils engineering to you-know-what, but it's a start. And so hopefully council will see fit to granting this easement as HAPCAP and Head Start moves forward. I agree with Member Fall in that, you know, a program like this, and especially have full-day Head Start, will really give young children in our community a heads-up. So it's a Head Start, so.
Questions from committee?
First, I'd like to say I am totally for your program and for the goal you have. I was just curious, and this is kind of off to the side because I'm not opposed to the easement at all, but I was curious whether you consider West Elementary as a source at all if the levy is approved.
Yes, and I've had extensive conversations with the superintendent. One of the issues there is they're not 100% sure of what will happen with that building. And the last conversation we had a couple months ago was that it's probably at least five years out before, because they'll need to use that facility should the levy pass to house students while other buildings are being built. So, and that location is actually ideal, and we kind of hung around and waited to see if that might work out, but it doesn't appear that, at least in the short term, if this land is not suitable, we certainly will continue to pursue that as an option.
Thank you.
Questions?
No questions, just that I'm certainly in favor of this. I think it's a worthy project, and I hope council can do as much as we can to get it going.
Other questions? Just thank you so much for your work, and would the use of the Richland Avenue property be discontinued entirely?
Most likely.
Okay. Thank you.
No more questions? Great, so that will come forward in the next couple weeks. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by the Student Senate Representatives about signs, specifically the sign regulations that have most to do with the banners and some of the banner issues that we've been experiencing as a diverse and opinionated community, which we all are. So, thank you for coming, and thank you for, you know, voicing your concern. That's why we're here.
Thank you for the introduction, Councilwoman Fall. I'll start off by saying my name. I'm Parker Smith. I'm here in my capacity as Off-Campus Life Commissioner for the OU Student Senate. I live at 85 West State Apartment B in Athens, Ohio. So you can introduce the context. I think probably everyone in the room knows, at the beginning of each school year, banners go up on the Welcome Weekend that often have very crude and demeaning sexual innuendo and content on them. And as a university community and students, you know, we're always concerned by that. And this year, there were banners that went up the week after with more positive messaging. But there were some reported issues around, like those banners ended up, some of the groups that put the positive messaging banners received fines and code violations, whereas the banners with the crude messaging were removed and taken down without any such punishment, which was part of the times in which they received fines. Those ones, I think, were enforced by the police, which they did not find, as the Code Enforcement Office does. So in trying to address some of these issues to make sure that this isn't just a thing that happens over and over again every year, which it kind of has been, John and I started looking through some of the city code in relation to signage, which is 12 pages long. It's quite a bit to dig into. And I just had a couple comments that came out as part of that process, because one thing that we have been hearing is that the city does not regulate the content of any signs or banners. And while it does not regulate the specific content, the beginning of the sign code does classify signs based on their content in order to categorize them and then define the standards and regulations that apply to the different signs. But in trying to figure out where these banners lie, we dug through these different classifications and really struggled to come away with what they actually would be, which makes them hard to govern and apply consistent law and code to. For example, signs are governed by their content and their type, directional signs, signs indicating identifying a building, similar things, and that is broken down into permanent and temporary signs. Signs are also defined by the structure that they're attached to, one of which is buildings, which is then broken down into a couple different categories itself. And then the laws and codes also apply by zone. It depends, most students fall in the R3 zone, which is just what most of campus is in. Though I myself do not, so it applies differently to me, because I live a block away from someone else, these laws would affect my housing differently, which is kind of confusing. That sounds simple, because those are clear categories, but in digging through the code, they're kind of interspersed between each other. A lot of different measurement requirements are listed in different sections. And for example, sorry, I could have copied and copied the code to this first, but in Section I, it talks about signs for R3, B1, B2, and other business zones. And here, it, for example, lists canopy signs as one section, but then also business identification signs as a separate section, although hypothetically, you could have assigned that as both, right? So in 12 pages of that, where there's signs, you know, that apply to one page, and then there's also separate stipulations for temporary signs or for the other zones, et cetera, there's a lot of different places you need to look to try to figure out where exactly your sign goes. And in digging through that, we could not really find anywhere that these banners that could have approached at the beginning of the year ago, which is problematic for everyone involved. And unfortunately, they fall into sort of this blanket point towards the end of non-conforming signs, which just states that all existing non-conforming signs are hereby declared to be a public nuisance, which would be a convenient way to get rid of and enforce the very crude ones. But part of what we're trying to do is find a way for students to voice, you know, some of their beliefs and opinions around this in a way that the crude ones would hypothetically, right, be removed or enforced, and that those more positive would not be. And that does get into regulating the content, but I would also point to, you know, in the beginning of the sign code in Section A for intent, there are, you know, points listed here. It says Point 5, the purpose of this code is to relieve the city of unattractive, garish, and unproductive signs. So I think that there's a manner, you know, in which we can work through the city code to work through some of that, because I do think there are some potential gaps here that could be fixed. Otherwise, this kind of seems like it's building up as like a bigger crisis every year, all these signs. Other campuses, even within Ohio, Kent State had a big problem, where then they ended up finding a ton of people with all these signs that are otherwise very positive in that regard. But I'll let John speak to some other ideas we came up with outside of city code.
Thanks, Parker.
My name's John Slosser. I'm the Governmental Affairs Commissioner for Student Senate. I live at 10 Mill Iron Street Apartment 3 here in Athens, Ohio. I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about the actual application, more so kind of the fee, the $40 fee. As a student, I feel like that's a little bit high for an application for a banner. We do have the Court Street banner, that's $35, which is less expensive than a self-put-up banner. I know that that fees $35 mostly because of the labor that goes into it. We also had some kind of comments about applications for temporary signage must include a drawing of property lines, distances from the property lines, elevation drawing, including the sign face area and height. I just, I feel like there could be a little bit easier of a way for students to express their free speech rights through the application process, but through a simpler application. That's kind of my big comment. We want to make sure that, you know, students do work through the application, but it's just a little bit more streamlined. And I just wanted to say thank you for letting us speak. Thank you for Councilwoman Fall for meeting with me earlier, two weeks ago, to talk about banners. I know that when the code was written, it really was not necessarily written in a student lens, so kind of going back and, you know, making sure that students have their input. Once again, thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Well, I think that this is an important topic to discuss, especially right now, when we've had so many interesting occurrences happening in our country. As a public person, public official, where I'm supposed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of people, I'm also charged with upholding the Constitution of Athens, of Ohio, and the Constitution of the United States. And there is the First Amendment, and it's the First Amendment for a reason. And it's very true that we cannot, unless it is pornography, we cannot do anything about content. However, we can regulate the size, the time, and the placement, and that is where you're talking about. And I see two issues that you're bringing up. One is that it's confusing. I would argue the confusion is there for a reason, because there's so many different types of signs. For example, buy Coors Beer, you know, that's fine in a B3 zone or a B1 zone, but it may not be buying in a residential area. And those are the sort of things that one has, and that's a banner. It's floppy and holds by strings. And so I think that there's this issue of content, which is unless it's, you know, pornography and you know it when you see it, or one of the seven dirty words, and then there's the way that you become, that we can enhance, that we can make sure that the First Amendment is protected, but also everybody else, so that there's not giant banners. There's not, they're not in the middle of the East State Street, you know, where the kids get off for the community center. That's the time and place, sort of thing. So I think that what we're talking about is trying to streamline, like maybe with a frequently asked question list at this, at code would probably be easier, the sort of things that you're talking about, exactly what does apply to me. And then there's a bigger, larger conversation about how we have dialogue with people, this sort of thing, which I think is happening here in another less formal communication. So, that's my two cents. Anybody?
Have you looked at what other communities with colleges have done or not done?
We just started looking into a little bit about what's going on at Kent State right now. Haven't really had any major takeaways from it, except it's kind of in the process, type of thing. But once we, that's a good idea, that we should look at more and more.
Yeah, Bull and Green in Kent, Miami, we should be definitely looking into those.
Yeah, the wheel may already be invented out there somewhere.
And International Town Gown Association has a listserv where a council member can direct a question, saying, what's your experience out there? Are there some people, some municipalities with ordinances that work well? So we can be looking for other models.
That's something that we can work together on. Let's, sir?
I appreciate your effort and research and work on this, and your willingness to come and communicate with us and work together. I think that's a fantastic aspect of what you're doing in your role. And I do think that legislating content, it gets very difficult to encourage the content we want and simultaneously discourage the content we don't want. So that's, I guess, where I have the most questions on, you know, how we move forward to make it more straightforward while keeping it constitutional. But I really appreciate your efforts. Thank you for coming.
I just wanted to thank you too, and also to applaud the people that put up the positive signs. I think that was a really good thing for the community after the offensive signs had been up and gave Athens kind of a black eye. So more power to you and keep it up.
Thank you.
I want to echo what Member McGee, just his final comment there, I too. And I've come to Student Senate and indicated that verbally, that I think those positive signs, the signs that went up a week or so after school began, that I think they were very appropriate. I also think that there's a way forward, I really do. City Service Safety Director and I have been sitting down brainstorming some other possibilities. I will also reach out to my counterparts when I'm in Los Angeles in a couple weeks at the National League of Cities with the University Communities Council. Those tend to be more city administrators, and I think the ITGA is another great avenue. I think between the two, we can kind of scour to see nationally what's going on, because this isn't, this isn't a phenomenon that just happens here in Athens. It happens all over the place. I applaud both of you, and Student Senate, and anyone else who's been helping to find a better path forward for this. I think maybe there's a way we can work through the Panhellenic organizations to find a good path forward when it comes to banners.
Well, what I see going forward, and this is like the first step with all of council listening, and looking at some of these models, and I would be more than happy to work with you, as I'm sure the mayor and the Service Safety Director, to put some, maybe model language together, and also looking at how, because students aren't the only one who do banners and signs, looking at helping to do some more frequently asked questions and more user-friendly stuff when it comes to signs at the Code Enforcement Office, I think would always help. So, great. Do you have any?
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Hillcrest Drive with this easement, which is this unusual sort of thing that happens when cities have boundaries with other political entities like counties and townships and stuff. So Hillcrest Drive is a situation where part of the road is not being kept up because it's kind of a no-man's land, would be the easiest way to describe it. So there needs to be an easement and some transfer of various titles in order to get this tiny bit of property in the correct jurisdiction so that it can be taken care of. Is that a correct way of saying it?
For anyone who's watching tonight, we're talking about a 40 by 60-foot rectangular piece of street for a library.
So, and this stuff happens all the time. You know, that's one of the reasons why we've been talking about rideaways and how sometimes they're not in the right place, and that happens with easements. So this will be coming forward. Any questions from council?
I actually have a question procedure related. Is this, the indication from the Service Safety Director was that we accept this? And I'm assuming, though, that that probably requires a piece of legislation, or maybe, yes?
Well, it has to be then released.
So we have it, okay.
So, and it's a two-step with the county, sort of thing.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. It's like an annexation easement process, two birds with one stone. Yee-haw. Any other questions from anybody? Okay. The last item on our agenda is the EMS, Emergency Medical Services, land use and land use agreements and lease agreement. And to remind everybody, this is out over by Beacon, Morrison Gordon, and TS Trim in that general area. TS Trim has given us donated 13 plus or minus acres so that it can be used for EMS, EMS hub, that people would like, the county especially, would like to develop. So this process will be doing a land use and lease agreement with the county to make this happen. Needs to be approved by the city. Questions from council? We've talked about this several times. This is all the legalese and the paper signing that we have to do in order to make this happen. So it's been up to the highlight of the Honda people, all the way up. So now it's all the way up to us. So, Mayor?
Yes, it has. It's gone all the way to Japan headquarters. This would be for, just to kind of, a little bit of a correction, for safety services. So it wouldn't be just for EMS. Our plans are to have a fire training, not necessarily a facility. It would be technical training out there on this property, doing things like possibly high-angle rescue, heavy equipment. Chief Reimer would like to see a burn house out there in the future. But again, TS Tech has been a great partner in this in coming forward, saying, yes, we're willing to donate it to the city for safety services. I've been working with the county commissioners for a while now, and, because I know that they've been struggling, looking for a location for a new EMS station, and I felt like this would be a great partnership between the two. So, yes, you'll be seeing legislation, the agreement that has been vetted by Prosecutor Jesse Branner. She's been working with us to work with the county.
You mentioned Chief Reimer's idea for a training center. I assume it's not just going to be used by our city fire department, but the townships also would be able to go in there and train.
Regional.
When this idea came forward, the idea that we could actually receive this property, one of the things I tasked Chief Reimer with doing is to reach out to all surrounding counties and beyond to see what kind of response there would be to having a fire or technical skills training center, to where they would come and partake in any training they had. And everyone said yes, from volunteer fire departments to other rescue entities, said that they would like to be a part of this in terms of technical training. So, yes. Hopefully, when this happens, that we will have other people coming to train here in Athens. Plus, this will help with our ISO rating with insurance by having a fire training facility or technical skills training facility.
Thank you for reminding us. It's been a while. Any other questions, comments? That will come forward through council. So, that's the end of our whole debate on planning and development. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have the Transportation Committee now, that is chaired by Councilmember Kotzis and has councilmembers McGee, Grace, and Crow.
Excuse me, are we all ready? You should ask me the same question. Okay, this is, we just have one bullet point tonight for the Transportation Committee, which is the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance program that we are getting ready to perhaps participate in. So this, if you remember back to council last week, we changed, I amended an ordinance on our, on going out to bid for our new smart parking meters, which we don't own yet. I just want to mention that. And so this is, instead of going for the lowest bid, this is participating in a program that we would, through the ORC, we're allowed to do, where basically we go out and the bid is pretty much, well, Mayor, do you, can you help me just a little bit? I did have some discussions with Andy Stone, and so it sounds like this is something that we participate in on a national level, and just kind of send that bid out there and then see what we get back. So it's a slightly different form of going through this process.
Yeah, this would be a cooperative purchasing program. You know, this isn't all that dissimilar from DAS, which is the Ohio Department Administration, Administrative Services. Or even another good example to give anyone who's watching tonight and for council is when we go out through ODOT with the SALT bids, same thing, to where you're getting a better price when you go through something like this with these cooperative systems.
Okay. And so my understanding with the SALT is that that's going in with other groups to get a better price on a larger amount.
Right.
Are we doing the same thing with, it's close, but it's not exactly apples to apples?
Right. No, it's not apples to apples, but it's, we would get better pricing through this particular cooperative in moving forward.
Yeah. It does seem like the smarter way to pursue this in that you can look at.
So if I understand right, though, we amended the ordinance last week to say to take out the lowest bidder. So you're, am I understanding right, that we might get an ability to bid from a larger group, but we might end up with a better product, but that it might cost us more? Not necessarily going to be the lowest price?
Well, I mean, that's, yes, is to answer your question. However, you know, a lot of times, software is a good example. Software- Software, you know, you might need a specific piece of software. We might, we need something in the city of Athens that no other software company out there, you know, or maybe someone can come close, but your product is going to be inferior, inferior than going with this other company. And that's basically what this allows us to do, too, is kind of pre-approved, you know, companies that have gone through. I'll give you one more example. Under this particular system is that we have been in communication with enterprise in exploring, you know, lease options for city vehicles as opposed to outright purchasing them all the time. And we believe that in the long run, there's cost savings. There is a leasing agency out there that is also underneath the system to where we can go through them, through this particular program, through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, rather than having to go and find, you know, the lowest bidder, which isn't always the best quality product in the end.
I have another question.
Yes, please.
Is there a fee? It says membership. Is there a fee involved?
I don't have an answer to that. I will get you an answer.
Okay.
So, I mean, overall, though, since it goes national, this is a wider net.
Is a wider net.
Okay.
I will find out about the fee, though. President Nysli?
Thanks.
Do we have additional questions? Member McGee?
So, if council approves this ordinance, we basically have done away with any requirement for the lowest bid, but will the, once we have obtained bids, or at least have obtained a possible price for a contract, will that come back to council, or will it just be processed through the administration?
Well, it would, it would go through council at some degree because you're authorizing the expenditure of city funds for something. And with the bidding process, when we do put out something to bid, city council doesn't sit in on the bid openings to find out what we're doing. You just rely on administration to go with the lowest bidder, or up to 10% above, you know, the engineer's estimated cost on some project. So, this wouldn't change that. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but.
Thank you.
Member Grace?
Yeah, I'm just wondering with the alliance, other than potentially leasing vehicles and acquiring smart meters, what other, what other programs or what other things would this alliance potentially be influencing within the city?
We just found out about the leasing, the vehicle leasing thing. That just kind of fell in our lap. It was like, oh, this company actually is part of, you know, under this particular program as well. I can try to find a list for you if you're interested. I would imagine that it is almost everything you could imagine that a municipality might be, you know, looking for. Again, but I don't know. I've not gotten into the details as to all the different products, whether fire hydrants could come from there, or water pipe, or sewer, I don't know. I can certainly find out for you.
Yes, President Nysli.
Some more questions?
Yeah, sure.
We could go online and look at this, too, I'm sure, and learn a lot. But is it primarily municipalities that deal with this? So, we could, if we logged on, we could probably see a list of different cities that are working with this.
Yeah, I don't know that it's primarily municipalities, but I do know that there are.
There are some.
There are.
Okay. Thank you.
There are.
So, as I think everybody's learning tonight, this is kind of just a new and different way to do this. And so, I think I need a little bit more of a conversation with, well, I reached out to Safety Service Director Andy Stone. He told me that Ron Lucas is the point person on this. So, I will try to connect with administration this week, just to, just to continue to wrap my head around it, because the first few questions that I asked, it just kind of opened up more questions. So, but do we, do we have any additional questions from anyone else, either here or in the audience? And the mayor?
Just, if I'm not mistaken, again, I would encourage you to reach out to Deputy Service Safety Director, but I think New Philadelphia has used this. But I will, I will make sure that Ron reaches out to you, or you can get ahold of
Great.
Deputy Service Director.
Great.
All right. And that is it.
All right. We'll move on to finance and personnel. Councilmember Reisner chairs this. It's joined by councilmember Butler and Crowell.
Finance and Personnel Committee has three items here. Appropriations and transfers, debt payment for wastewater treatment plan and water treatment plan, and compensation elected officials. So, we'll start out with appropriations transfers. I have a list here of appropriation transfers. I'll read this out, and if anyone has any additional comments or additions, we'll discuss them. We have a decrease on the cemetery fund, supply line, and increase the capital line by $1,700 to purchase a trailer for equipment transport. A decrease of general fund auditor service line, and increase the fund line by $30,000 for additional money needed for tax refunds. We discussed this, I believe, last Tuesday at our auditor meeting. Because of the way the state income taxes, or the state has taken our ability to do income taxes, it's caused a shortfall with our, the amount of money that the auditor would normally keep back for refunds that we know we're going to be making. So, in this case, because the state's doing it, we, or rather, the auditor does not have a good idea of how much the refunds are going to be coming. So, that's why we're, we're having this. Does the administration want to comment on that?
We'll put exactly what's going on.
Yeah.
For business tax.
Exactly, business taxes. That's correct. Now, the debt payments for the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant, I know at our meeting, different figures were sort of discussed back and forth. Was one finally settled on with the, for payments?
I'm sorry, could you?
Okay, well, our debt payments are due January 1st, 2019, for the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. And the discussion, I believe, we had last Tuesday in committee or meeting, was the amounts that we're going to pay. And I don't know if a figure was finally hammered out.
We do have a figure, and I know that we were going probably with a lesser amount on one of them, but I have them in my notes for the auditor's file. And we can get those to the clerk of council tomorrow. So, we have it for the minutes.
Right. Well, we'll need that for the ordinance coming up Monday.
Yeah, we'll have that for you.
Okay. And then, let me get to our council disk drive here. There's a spreadsheet that other members of council can see. It's called City Salary of Elected Officials. It lists various communities from Lebanon, Ohio, down to Kent. And exactly, you have a population of over 25,000 there, council member. That's interesting. I'm going to have to expand this up a little bit here. Essentially, this spreadsheet that was provided to me by President of Council Nysli shows the various elected officials and their compensations, both full time, part time. And the reason this is brought up here is to give a comparison of where the elected officials of Athens stand with other cities in that, in Ohio of comparable size. Athens is listed at 23,000, but we also have Xenia at 25, Chellicothi at 21, so, and in Kent at 28. So, we can look through here and see what the various compensation packages are. What we're mainly talking about here is council. We, let's see, I'm trying to think, I believe there was a, was there another document that showed the?
There is another agenda, document in the Google Drive shared to council members that shows the previous ordinance. And that does include elected, all elected official positions. And setting the amounts for the next term.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Yes, okay. Let's see, members of council, it stated that commencing January 1, 2015, the salary of each member of council shall be $7,612.02 per annum by calendar year 2015. This was passed in '14. So, the schedule for this type of thing is that the council that is not yet seated will propose an ordinance for a increase in compensation for a council that has not yet been elected. I think by law, we're not allowed to raise our salaries during our own session. So, anything that we come up with in form of an ordinance would be for a council that will be elected at the next election, November 2019. Boy, it's almost here, isn't it? So, we'll have to discuss, looking at this template, I believe our, the last time we did this was essentially a 2% from the previous years before. Discussion, members of committee, yea, nay? What's your thoughts?
I didn't understand exactly what we were looking at here. The, the changes are to both the mayor and to the members of council.
And auditor, yes.
And law director.
And law director.
So, it's all the elected officials and treasurer.
Treasurer. All electeds. Okay.
It was a comprehensive ordinance. I remember President Nysli.
And so, the reason that I shared the spreadsheet was to give you an idea. It gives what the Ohio Municipal League for other comparable cities our size, the kinds of pay that they have. And then also, the spreadsheet on one of the windows looks at the rate of increases that we've had over the years. There, you know, there was a year in 2012 and 13 where we didn't take any increases.
Yes.
And then the following year in 14 and 15, we only took 1% each of those years. The past few years have been at 2. So, it's a decision we have to make, I think, in coordination with other elected officials, saying, what's, you know, the financial picture of the, you know, the city and what we can afford in the general, general fund.
Right. How many years again was it that there was no raise given?
That was back in 12 and 13. Council received 0%, and then in 14, 1%, and 15, 1%.
Which, which again, I believe, was a lower rate than other employees of the city were receiving.
Uh huh. Correct.
Thank you.
And if I understand correctly, Chair Reisner, what you're doing now is bringing this up to council members with the suggestion that it be enacted before the end of the year.
Correct.
It could be enacted as late as maybe January, I think the auditor shared with us, but I don't think we really, I think it'd be more propitious for the budget to
Is it?
Between, to move on this before the end of the year.
Is it before the filing deadline?
Yes, yeah. So many days before the filing deadline.
Until February.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever date that is, yeah. Well, it's technically 90 days before the primary election. They change it. I get confused. If I don't get the little book, I never know what's going on. So, well, what we have to do as, as council is decide whether or not a raise is necessary, looking at the city's financial situation, I have to take that into account, the amounts. It's a tricky issue. It's one thing to discuss how much our city employees are earning and how much they should be, receive a raise, either through the bargaining units or the non-bargaining units. Somehow, that's easier to discuss than another person, but when it's coming to your own, you know, how do you feel about that?
It is. And it's not actually coming to our own, in a way, because these are the persons who will be serving in the next term.
That's correct.
Some of us may run again, some of us may choose not to run again. And that's the whole reason for setting it out that far ahead of time, so that it's not, you know, in a sense, setting your own salary.
That's correct.
And just for, you know, purposes of looking at the amount. So, in 2016, the salary for a council member was $7,763, and it raised it to $7,918 by doing the 2% increase. So, we're talking about not vast amounts of money, but I hear you too, Councilman, Chair Reisner, you want to be careful, given the financial situation of the city?
That's correct. So, I'm taking that we need a little more discussion on this issue before we actually put an ordinance together. So, councilmember Butler?
Thank you. In looking at the first spreadsheet, the council pay is comparable to other communities our size, as acknowledged. City of Lebanon, it looks like $6,000. Wadsworth, $7,200. Chillicothi, $5,150. So, it's similar. Kent, Ohio, $6,200.
And these are 2013 figures, so they're five years out of date.
That's true.
Probably be helpful is to get the new figures from the municipal league.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're right. They are.
So, it's a little out of date. Thank you.
I'm member Crowell.
This just brings up in my mind the age old question is, of what is the population of Athens, Ohio? And when we look at these communities, now certainly Kent has a similar situation of having a large student population that may or may not be included in their census. I think we all know here that the permanent population of Athens, Ohio is not 23,832.
No.
We're a community of maybe 6,000 or 7,000 permanent residents.
Less than.
Plus.
There's 20,000 students. They're counted in the census.
Well, sort of. Some of them are and some of them aren't.
Right.
It all depends. Most of them are, but.
Yes.
So, I'm just, just for sake of discussion and looking at this issue further, all of these communities may not be the most accurate outside of maybe Kent.
Right.
The most accurate communities to be comparing yourselves with.
I don't follow that at all. I mean, we have a student body, granted that they are transient and they may be here three, four years, but nonetheless, they are residents, they are citizens, they do depend upon the city for all of the services that we provide. They provide income to the city, they're taxed, they work here. I mean, they certainly pay sales tax. Okay, that goes to the county, granted, but we, we can't have a two-tiered system of citizenship where student citizens and then permanent resident citizens, you know, we're all equal before the law. That's my two cents there. So, I think it is an accurate comparison. I mean, they're still people. Anything else? Now that I get off my soapbox?
Just again, that I find this chart fascinating.
Yeah.
We have more employees in 2013 than these other communities. yet we have half the number of firefighters of some of these communities. That's very interesting. I think a further discussion of half the police. Now again, these are, these are five years old, these numbers. So I'd like to see updated numbers, if we could see updated numbers, that would be helpful, I think.
To that point, I can certainly speak to Chillicothe because I know the mayor of Chillicothe, and I've spoken to him about their fire services, their fire department, that they both have fire as well as EMS. So they, the fire department runs both. So sometimes that makes those numbers larger, because you have, you're wearing two hats, basically, as opposed to Athens, which has Athens County EMS, and our fire department does not run SQUAD.
That's helpful.
Madam President?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we can get some updated numbers and then talk about some of these other things.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, then we could really get into the weeds in this. Maybe we need a special finance and personnel committee session sometime, just to hash it out.
Okay.
Well?
All right.
Thank you. There's no more comments on that issue, we'll...
Call back the Committee of the Whole, thank you.
We don't have to get up?
No, you don't. I think Debbie planned it that way for us, so we'd move straight into... We do, just to alert the audience, they'll probably see it from the agenda, but we do have a special session right immediately following the Committee of the Whole meeting.
I mean, one of ours is...
Where we will be reading some of the ordinances through, several of which need to be suspended because of time constraints that we have for finances. So Committee of the Whole, wellhead protection plan. Do we have some updates? Yes, Councilmember Crowe?
Thank you, President Nisley. We last discussed the Title 39, the wellhead protection, and Councilmember Fall pointed out that we should be looking at Title 47, the resource extraction and waste disposal monitoring and mitigation program in conjunction with any changes made to the wellhead protection plan, Title 39. So I discussed these changes with Mike Cooper of the Athens City-County Health Department, as well as Safety Service Director Stone. And it was determined that there can be some changes to Title 39 to sort of have the same language in both. But there does not need to be any changes to Title 47, which really has the more sort of stringent or exact requirement to report spills to the service safety director instead of the administrative authority. Now, if you look in the definitions of Title 39, the administrative authority is the service safety director. But in order to have our code be more uniform, they recommended that we make the change to Title 39, requiring these spills to be reported to Mr., to the, to the service safety director or his or her designee. Now, there was some change, difference in language in that in Title 47, any spills from an injection well facility are to be reported within one hour. And under Title 39, in our wellhead protection zone, it is required that those spills be reported immediately. And Director Stone pointed out that since injection wells are prohibited from our wellhead protection area, that we really have the same, that it's okay that in our wellhead protection, we say immediately, it's a little bit more stringent than the one-hour requirement, but it would be the same because, of course, injection wells are not permitted within our wellhead protection area. So we go back to the previous changes, which I proposed to council two weeks ago, which is that the updated language would read, "Any spills of regulated substances, including, but not limited to, pesticides and fertilizers, shall be reported to the service safety director or his or her designee immediately upon detection of the spill." And that sentence will now not only be moved up in the, in the Title 39 at the beginning of the title, but will also be repeated where it originally was located, lower down in the title. And there would be no changes to Title 47. Any comments or questions?
Wow.
I appreciate the work, checking on it now. It'll save us some time later, perhaps, you know? If it hadn't, if it had needed changes, so thank you. We'll move on to the Baileys' trail system. And we had originally thought, number one, that we would be approaching council tonight to ask for a letter of support for a power grant through the Appalachian Regional Commission, that the rural outreach was, rural action was going to submit, or has submitted. We learned on late Friday afternoon that the deadline was Friday night, but then made the decision, since the agenda had already been published, to go ahead with at least an initial discussion of the Baileys' trail system. The mayor and I have attended a meeting on October 3 at the Wayne National Forest that included partners from several organizations, the county commissioners, also the village manager of Chansey, Ohio University, and then acting forest supervisor for Wayne National Forest, and several other people, including Don McCarthy. Don McCarthy was originally scheduled to be here. We're going to limp along with at least some basic information. We can't present it nearly as adequate, thoroughly as she can, but we can at least give you an idea of the size and scope of the project. It is for a mountain biking trail system that will be 88 miles, and it will be contained in the Wayne National Forest. And part of the reason that the decision was made on the Wayne is that the attractiveness of this, as they say, is that it's within 200, the trails is within 250 miles of 35 million people. 15% of the US population, including over a million mountain bikers. So stating that Athens County has unique resources. And so we learned about this ambitious project that does have, I believe, a $3.5 million construction costs. And they are in the midst of seeking out grants and also ways, methods of paying for this. I did want to add that the county commissioners on Friday did issue a letter of support for the power grant through rural action to the Appalachian Regional Commission. Mayor, do you have other items to add about this?
Sure, just to kind of piggyback on what President Nisley was saying is that by having a resolution go forward in support of the Bailey, I am certainly in support of Bailey Bike Trail System, which, as President Nisley indicated, will be 88 miles of mountain biking trail, which will be significant. And, you know, the positive economic impact would really not only be big for Southeastern Ohio, but certainly for Athens County and the city of Athens, as well as other municipalities, both villages and city, city of Nelsonville. But to have a, a letter of support or resolution would certainly be helpful when other granting opportunities come available to where there's something that can be deployed much more expediently than to have to go through, as you, council's all aware, a sometimes longer process than trying to make deadlines. It was unfortunate that we weren't able to get something in to accompany this grant. But that said, I believe there'll be future opportunities. And so hopefully, council will see fit to have some large-brush letter of support for the Bailey Bike Trail System.
Questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember McGee?
Two questions. Would the city be contributing any finances to this project? And the second question is, would this trail be open to ATV at all?
To answer your second question first, no. It would be for hiking bicycles, that's as I understand it. And I might lean on Councilmember Cottis just a tad, because I know he has been tracking this equine. Will horses be...
Horses, horses will not.
Will not? Okay, thank you.
Not, not to, not to drag it out too long, but the history goes back to 1994. It was a, it was a trails master plan that was developed by, by many of the user groups. Mountain bikers were actually not present at the table. It was motorcyclists who were starting to see an increase of bicycle traffic on their trails. And they said, we should, they should have their own trails. And so the Baileys, which is this 9,000-acre tract of land that goes between Chansey and Nelsonville with connections to Bookdole and kind of running parallel between 13 and US 33 north of here, that was the idea, that was, that was the area that was identified. So this, this, here we are today with, with a shovel-ready project. The NEPA has already been completed, so it's, it's cleared from an environmental standpoint. And, and we are seeking not only the, the power grant from the ARC, but we have a couple of different channels that we're currently, currently looking for.
Including state funding, I believe, possibly.
Correct, yes.
Looking at the possibility of that. And there, there might be a request that would come in the future to council, and that would be something that council and administration would need to decide, working together. But I don't think that's the intent tonight, other than conceptually supporting the Baileys' trail system. Councilmember Fall?
When we discuss it further, I would like more information about the impact investing portion of it and the model. I think that that's going, you know, be critical with what kind of support Athens can give and that people must understand it before we can discuss anymore.
Okay.
So to finish up with Member McGee's first question, I think it's kind of being circling around at the dais right now. I will mention this as well. This is conversations that have come up at the meetings that President Nisley was referring to. And that is that there's the potential for there being state funding coming from AML, which is the abandoned mine, abandoned mine lands. So there's, there's a number of different potential mechanisms for funding this. I mean, this is, it's an extensive project. And then working, or at least being in communications with Quantified Ventures, which came to us some time ago about this, with the Bailey Bike Trail System. You know, there's a number of different ways for this to actually happen. One would be the, a longer path, and one being a shorter path to having the trail done and being more impactful in getting people to come to the system itself. The projections in terms of those who, who would come to utilize this, again, these are projections, but I don't think they're too far off. As a matter of fact, I don't think they're off at all, is, you know, up to, you know, kind of the middle would be about 235, 245,000 people annually using that. And it could be much higher than that, it could certainly be less than that. But having a little bit of understanding over the mountain biking community that they're always looking for something as interesting as something like this. And this, this system too, just to kind of close out, close the loop on it, would be all skill levels. So it would be a great facility for beginners, just learning how to, to mountain bike, all the way up to probably extreme experts, you know, people who I wouldn't want to ride with.
Thank you.
Member Crowe?
Yeah, I've heard it compared to a really nice ski resort. You know, that they've got lots of different kinds of trails, lots of opportunities, but very large. I mean, people will come, I think, from far away to try this trail, that trail, beginners, advanced, et cetera. I think it's very exciting.
I would agree with you. Your example is an interesting one, because in, since this is in the Wayne National Forest, there will be no fees to use the trails itself, unlike a ski resort where it's expensive to ski. I'm a skier, I know.
Yeah.
But, you know, but there is a parallel there, that it will, people come. It's kind of like the field of dreams.
There will be a moment when they likely come to the city and ask for a financial contribution.
And let me, let me clarify the "they." So the, initially, this, this was started between the Athens Bicycle Club and the, and Wayne National Forest. And this was, this was the, the initial governmental community group that kind of started to form up and start, start working on this process. We were, the community side, along with the forest side, we were so successful in that we were able to participate in a, in an RFP that the Forest Service went after. And we won a contract, a national contract against 14 other projects on US Forest Service property to work with Quantified Ventures. So Quantified Ventures is a, it's an impact investment firm out of Washington DC, and they structure pay-for-success transactions. Pay-for-success, okay. And so they were, they were, they're funded by the National Forest Foundation. So this is a nonprofit that's working with National Forests at the national level. So we basically won, won the ability to, to work with this company on a pilot program. This is the first time that they've attempted to do, do a pay-for-success transaction, which is a, which is a, a model to fund infrastructure or other, other, other projects. They came over from Britain in 2008. Obama was able to get it through, and it was passed in 2016. And so that was when it became an official path for federally funded projects to be funded this way. So you have, you have, Quantified Ventures basically studies the projects and tries to figure out how, what, what the benefits are. You know, if we build a road, who, you know, there's got to be some, some sort of benefit to someone somewhere. So they identify those, those benefits. And then they start to look at, then, then contacting the entities that are, that will benefit from that, you know, from that project. And then they will, will, will try to agree on a metric, ink a deal where, where you would basically, when that money does, when, when that project does what they believe it's going to do, that's when the money would start to be available to then pay back the initial investors. So there's, there would be private investment upfront, expecting a return on, on, on the back end. But if the project doesn't produce, the investors do not receive the return. So there's risk involved for them. But it's a way to, to get funding upfront sooner in order to have a quicker return on the investment. Does that make... I've studied this a little bit, so I have, you know, but, and I try not to lose people too much. But if anybody has any additional questions, I'm always available.
I think what would be helpful is a pie chart of the sources of funding at this point and the total project cost.
Or a Venn diagram of something.
And their, their purpose, obviously, be trying to, and trying to line up all the funding as quickly as possible is to bring the, get the trail built, rather than dragging it out for 10 years. So...
So if I'm hearing everyone correctly, the conversation is that we will likely be approached at some point? That's what I'm hearing?
I think.
Okay.
That would, that would be dependent on, on the conversations between now and then, you know? Since it's, since it's a pilot program, you know, project, it's never been, been done before. So it's something that they're still looking at and trying to, you know, to, to figure it out. So, you know, we could say yes, but, but that yes may never come.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And do I have a sense of council on whether or not a broad brush-stroke letter of support, as the mayor is asking about? Not committing to finances?
No, this, this would just be for grants.
But just to, a letter of support for grants that they may be pursuing?
Yeah.
That conceptually were supportive of the project? That conceptually were supportive of the project, but not committing to finances?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And we'll hear more, more information, I'm sure. We're going to move into a special session where we will read through some of our ordinances, some of them we will suspend and pass tonight, and some of them are third reading, so they're at their point where they would pass normally. And our first item of business is to establish the quorum that all members of council are present. The ordinance for third reading is an ordinance granting a revocable license to Cameron Fuller, owner 97 Columbus Road, to allow an existing concrete pad to encroach on the city right-of-way. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I'm moved that we adopt 106-18.
Second.
Thank you. We talked about this several times, we've been talking about right-of-ways, and these went a whole lot this past few weeks. So basically, it's to allow for the patio that's developed at the Devil's Cow.
We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 106-18. Are there any other comments or questions on this ordinance? Any comments or questions from the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 108-18 is an ordinance amending the 2018 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President, I move to be adopt 108-18.
Second.
This is an appropriation ordinance, we're moving some funds from Transportation Fund to capital improvements for various sundry purchases, and also moving funds from the Parking Garage Fund 732, Parking Garage Debt Fund 733, for an amount of $145,000.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 108-18. Are there any other questions or comments from council members, administration, audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading. The first one being 102-18, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a contract to lease/purchase smart parking meters, and this is introduced by Councilmember Kotsas. And I think we need to suspend on this one.
Would we? Okay. President Nisley, at this time, I would like to suspend the rules for ordinance 102-18.
Second.
And this is, this needs to be out before, I think, October 30th, 31st.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Kotsas.
President Nisley, I move to adopt 102-18.
Second.
And this is to enter into the contract to lease and purchase, lease or purchase smart parking meters on a five-year term, effective January 1st, 2019, through January 1st, 2024.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 102-18 for the smart parking meters. Any comments or questions from council members?
Nope.
And then, yes, Councilmember Grace.
Are we also going to be suspending, as far as for entering the alliance, which was linked into the purchase of the meters?
Yes, we will. Yes, thank you, thank you for noting that. We are, Debbie had already warned me, I'm just, thank you, but good to ask now, yes. So right now, we have the motion and second for approval of 102-18, and we've asked for any other additional comments from, or questions from other council members, from the audience? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 113-18 is an ordinance establishing East Park Drive as a new public right-of-way, introduced by Councilmember Fall. Ordinance 114-18 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.22 Water System, Section 29.22.04 Water Heating Facilities, introduced by Councilmember Fall. Ordinance 116-18 is an ordinance extending the Pilot Residential Parking Permit Program for one year, introduced by Councilmember Kotsas. Ordinance 118-18 is an ordinance amending the 2018 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President, I believe we need to suspend this ordinance tonight, so I hereby make a motion that we suspend the rules for 118-18.
Second.
The reason for the suspension, I believe there's a bill that is, needs to be paid.
Okay.
And we're reaching the deadline for it, when it comes due.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules on 118-18. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Madam President, I make a motion that we adopt 118-18.
Second.
This has been discussed in committee, it's an appropriation ordinance, moving various funds to different departments, we're near the end of the year where this type of thing happens, so expect more to come.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 118-18. Any other questions or comments from council members, the administration, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 119-18 is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce 2018 year-end appropriations, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And we'll move to an ordinance for first reading, and as Councilmember Grace noted, we will need to suspend on this one. This is ordinance 120-18, an ordinance authorizing participation in the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, the NCPA program, introduced by Councilmember Kotsas.
President Nisley, I would like to suspend the rules for ordinance 120-18.
Second.
And this is, time is of the essence.
Okay. We do have a motion and second for suspending the rules, given our time constrictions, our time restraints on needing to move forward with purchase of the parking meters, purchase or lease. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
President Nisley, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 120-18.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. And so, and so this is, this is what we just discussed in committee, and so as Member McGee noted, we will be able to revisit this contract when it does come back, but this is just a new way to approach the, getting the price for our software and hardware.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval, any comments? Councilmember Fall.
Because we join this NCPA program, it's not necessarily means that we have to buy anything from it.
That's true.
So, that's just to put it out there, and so because I know that there were questions, this happens when things get rushed, is that we don't fully get to hear all the ins and outs, but this doesn't necessarily make us do anything through the program.
And I would like to request that the questions we had during the earlier discussion in the committee be answered, and if we could have some kind of answer in writing to council members about the NCPA program, that would be helpful. Councilmember Grace.
I just wanted to add that when I was not in committee earlier, I did a bit of Googling, and in the frequently asked questions, there is no cost to participate to the city, or it can also, it's cities, counties, local government, state agencies, healthcare organizations, nonprofit corporations, school districts, are all the different agencies that participate in this cooperative, and there is no cost or obligation for purchases upon becoming a member, so. I just wanted to say, I found that answer, and that allays some of my concerns.
Good, thanks for doing the homework. Mayor Patterson.
Member Grace?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll head to that end, though. Just worth pointing out that if we do find that there's an asset or assets that we are looking for in this process, what it'll do is it'll cut down on some level of cost in terms of having to advertise for bids and all that, so that, again, it's not large, but at the end of the day, there is some savings that could be had, but again, to Member Fall's point and to what you just described, we're not obligated to use this program for procurement.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and second for approval of 120-18. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, the ordinance is approved. And I think we have completed our business tonight, so if we could have a motion for...
Motion adjourn.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Butler and Fall. We have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote with your feet.
Thank you very much, we've adjourned at 8:22 PM.